Okay, welcome everyone today to our meeting of Tuesday, May the 10th, 2022, and this is 1:00 PM. I want to welcome all of our staff that are here today and our complement of council. We're all here today. So, thank you for joining us. I want to send a warm welcome to those of you who may be watching via our live or our taped recording, I should say. So at this time, I will read a call to meeting order. And then I will read our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the township of Asphodel Norwood is located on the Treaty 20 Mississauga Territory and the traditional territory of the Mississauga and Chipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which include, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a drink of water, it's just choking me up here. Which include Curve Lake, Hiawatha, Alderville, Skugog Island, Rama, Balsallay and Georgina Islands First Nations. We respectively acknowledge that the Williams Treaties First Nations are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. So at this time, I'll ask council for a moment of silent reflection so we may reflect upon our duties of today. Thank you. Thank you. I'll ask any council at this time if there's any declaration of pecuniary interest to say so now or at time of topic. Counselor Archer.
Yes, you may all be leaving the meeting that, the public meeting at 2:00.
Okay, thank you. The clerk will make note of that. Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll ask for the approval of the agenda. So the recommendation that the township of Asphodel Norwood Council meeting agenda for today, the May the 10th be adopted as circulated. Motion by Counselor War, seconded by Counselor Archer. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Council meeting minutes of April 26, 2022. And the recommendation that the minutes for this regular meeting be adopted as presented. Deputy Mayor Bert and Counselor Walsh. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any business arising from those minutes, counsel? Seeing no hands, thank you. So then on to the consent agenda. It's correspondence for information. So we have C1, C2, C3, up to C8. And then the minutes of the Asphodel Norwood Cemetery Board for April the 12th, 2022. And the recommendation that the township of Asphodel Norwood approved the consent agenda as circulated. Motion by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bert. Is there any discussion on any of the topics? All right, seeing no hands, then all in favor. And that's carried. Thank you. There's no delegations or presentations today. Then we're on to staff and committee reports. So R1 would be Peter DeShane, which is our manager of Public Works and Environmental Services. And this is regarding traffic calming devices. Peter, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's through you. Back on in the last regular council meeting on April 26, we were authorized to do some research on traffic calming devices specifically for the Narwood Park subdivision. So our objective here was to investigate what options there are available for traffic calming devices and how they might work to mitigate speed. Given that this was due to some complaints that were received from residents who reside in the Norwood Park subdivision. But we also looked at other areas in the township where we've received complaints in the past too, where these units might work well. So there's been studies done on traffic calm, different traffic calming devices. And these studies have proven that they do reduce speed, which in turn reduces risk to fatal injury or serious injury to cyclists and pedestrians. So there are some options out there. Some of them include traffic islands, roundabouts, curb extensions, speed bumps, radar signs and line painting. And for the purpose of this report, we are only looking at two options and they are the radar speed signs and line painting. The radar signs that, sorry. Radar signs are effective at reducing speed and offer visibility, versatility, sorry, to be easily moved around as we need them on various roads or streets. They're installed off to the side of the road, so there's no impact to the driving lane or to the road surface. And we are going to look at some line painting as vigilantes as well for future as we see the need arises. Some of the locations that we're looking at throughout the township include the Nord Park subdivision. So Daryl during Crescent, one on each side. So that we catch the traffic coming in on both ends. Kenner Road 45 at Mapleview Retirement Residence. And sorry, so that's it for this year. And then in 2023, we'd like to consider the Asphodel Third Line and Center Line Road. So the two units that we've looked at. We have ones, there's a comparison chart you can see in my report here. One is from BMR Manufacturing in Camelford. And then two other options are from Cali Tech. So there's a couple of differences between the units. You'll notice that some of them say 50 watt or 100 watt or 80 watt. That is the size of the solar panel that comes with the sign. And basically that, the bigger the number, the faster it charges, the batteries and the less sunlight it requires. Some of the, the unit from BMR does not have a message board on it. It only shows your speed and with a flashing light. The other two units from Cali Tech, you can, you have options to write five different, up to five different messages included with the flashing of your speed as you're driving and then a flashing light as well. This unit will also collect data on traffic in both directions, time of day, speed, and number of cars traveling that speed. And it will collect up to a million vehicles, I believe. Before we have to download it. And then we can download that data through an app on our phone. So we just drive up to the sign, connect to it through Bluetooth and download the data. And then we can manipulate how we want it spreadsheet or whatever we want to do with it. I have some pictures here in my report too of each model. It's felt that the Cali Tech model may be a little more aesthetically pleasing and may blend well with within the roads on the township. As you can see, the other model is kind of plain yellow and like your typical sign. I feel like it might, might just get overlooked. So our recommendation today is to authorize the purchase of three signs with an offset limit of $20,000 and for those signs to be located on Daryl during Crescent and County Road 45.
Thank you, Peter. Counsel, questions?
Thank you through you, Mayor. First of all, Peter, thank you for the quick turnaround. I don't know that we've ever requested something and had a backlist within a week. Really, it would be within a week to have to have it in. So thank you very much for the quick turnaround in the report. I certainly have supported the signs and or line painting. The, when you talk about the roundabouts and the islands and the roundabouts, not only are they extremely expensive, but I know the agricultural community has big issues with that because you cannot get large agricultural equipment. So that's a big issue in different parts of the communities. So it's certainly not something the A community likes to see. I guess the, the one from Cali Tech, it does, even though it is a little bit more money, I think when you look at all the options and the versatility, I think the old saying, go to get what you pay for. And I do believe that after, after looking at it, that that would, that would certainly be the way to go. And you did mention those to start for this year and then looking at budget 2023. And you mentioned the third line. Now is that north or south of County Road 2? Because I'm sure both could use it. Seeing the speeds on both of those sections. And I just wondered what section you would be looking at third line for next year.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I would suggest that we'd look at both considering that we're going to pave the third line on north of Center Line this year. So I expect that somewhere to Center Line Road speeds will, could increase because we do that. So we would probably look at both.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor War, please.
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. Peter, I was just wondering, you said that it tracks data up for a million cars.
That's, yeah, that's what we're told.
That would be a long time that they would be in service, right?
Yeah.
And so what kind of data would you be looking at from, from that?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. So the data that it will collect is our speeds, the time of day, the number of cars traveling at those speeds. So it's similar to the Black Cat report that we would get from the OPP.
Yeah. Okay, any other hands?
Counselor War, through you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Peter. Again, echo Deputy Mayor works on the quick drum. So those are the requested three locations. How often would you look at us? I could be, but those there for two months on the work and then somewhere else there are a lot of work that will be installed and repositioned somewhere else.
Thank you through you, Mayor. No, they're very versatile. They install on your regular signpost. So it's easy for us to move it around. And I would suspect that if we see a reduction in speed or sort of what we're setting them there for, then, then we could possibly move them into another location.
Um, any other hands at this time? I have a question too, just before the CEO wants to have a question or comment. Is there a form to lock them to somehow, like when we put them up, if they're going to be just on the signposts, is there a way that we can put like a fancy bolt or a nut on them that would be hard to get off? Or is there any thought to that? People steal it. Have we ever thought of something like that?
Thank you. There are ways that we can sort of safe proof it, I guess, if you will. You know, we can, we can damage the thread so that the bolt can't get off and different things like that. So we'll certainly make sure that we take steps to mitigate that as much as possible.
Just a question. Thanks. Yeah. So the CEO, Candace, you have a call?
Yes, just to kind of go back to what Counselor Walsh was asking in regards to moving the radar signs around. So Peter and I had some conversations in regards to this. I do think in certain areas, they may become permanent. And I think that once the residents get used to having that there and feel that it has provided a solution to the problem, I don't feel that they would be in support of them moving, especially in the closed-in subdivision areas. That said, I do think that there is opportunity to move them in the rural area. So we want to move it from the third line. We also have some concerns on the seventh line. In those more open rural settings, I think probably in the village, and you see this, we all know where they are in the villages around because they've become a bit more of a permanent fixture. People learn to rely on them as a mitigation measure. So some will move, but I just wanted to let council know that some of them I suspect will be fixed. They won't all move around. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any follow-ups, counsel? All right. So here, we had off the recommendation to us, council, we need a little pressure on that or someone's want to make a motion on that recommendation. Counselor Archer. Seconded by Counselor Walsh. Any other discussion on the motion? No hands, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter, on that one. Okay, next is R2, would be Ed Whitmar, our Chief Building Official Planning Coordinator. And this has to do with regarding an annulment of an agreement with Dr. Janet Hucks. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, in the report, you'll see the background and the discussion notes. In 2011, Dr. Janet Hucks requested a dwelling to be changed into a farmhands or a accessory building for the farm. So they did not have to demolish it. They really wanted, what they really wanted was to have a second dwelling on their property and build a brand new dwelling and be able to keep the second dwelling, the original farmhouse. They did not want to demolish it. And so at that time, our zoning bylaw would not permit a second dwelling. You know, they would have to go through a zoning bylaw amendment. And they didn't want to do that. So then we came up with a solution of entering into an agreement and change the existing farmhouse into an accessory building to still be used at the farm. And so there was very minimal amount of work to be done. More or less, they had to remove all the furniture. And so the kitchen didn't have to be removed because they wanted to wash garlic and possibly do jams or something else from the farm. The bedrooms became like storage areas for, and shelving units for, again, more stuff like that. So they took out a building permit for a change of use. We went and did the inspection. They took a building permit out for the new dwelling. They had this agreement in place that they couldn't use that. They couldn't, it couldn't be a rental unit. It couldn't be a second farm dwelling. 2022, we're allowed second dwelling units and they would really like to be able to have this as a rental unit again, and turn this back into a dwelling unit. And to me, since housing is at a crisis and we do need all the houses that we can get and it's extra income for the farm owners. I think it's a great idea and I support them rescinding the bylaw that created the, that allowed us to enter into the agreement and make this back into another dwelling unit. They will have to take a building permit out to change it back into be a change of use permit from an agricultural accessory building back to a single detached dwelling unit. That way, it's on our records and it's on impact and they'll be taxed as a single detached dwelling instead of an accessory farm agricultural building. And so you can see by the background, it has all the different dates of back in 2011 or 2012 when council approved the agreement. I'm glad that they didn't go through the process of just demolishing the house because there was really nothing wrong with it other than it was an older structure and they wanted a brand new home. And I'll leave it up to council to ask any questions.
Hey, thank you, Ed. Counsel, this is a good news story for our township and just another way that we're able to try to help people out here and that want to do good for themselves. So counsel, any questions on this at all? All right, seeing no hands. Then there's a recommendation then that we received this report regarding the annulment agreement between Janet Hucks, Dr. Janet Hucks and Asphodel Norwood. And that further that we rescind this bylaw 2012-40. If the Mayor Bert has made the motion, seconded by Counselor War, is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ed. All right, R3 then. Another good news story for the township. Candace White, our CEO of Park Treasure. And this is regarding our all wheels park, the RFP results, please, Candace.
Thank you, Mayor. So in late July of 2021, township staff became aware of the Canada Community Revitalization Fund, which is administered by the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario. So it is a federal grant. Township staff submitted an application based on the results of our master recreation survey that requested the youth of our township were looking for an upgrade or a new all-wheels park or skateboard park. The application was successful. We entered into a contribution agreement with the federal government in September of 2021. An RFP was released for the design build of the new facility, which closed on April 28th, when submission was received. Although it is only one, in any procurement process, we always like to see three. That is always the magic number for comparative purposes. Based on reaching out to the industry, we were actually nervous that we weren't going to receive any. As we all know, labor shortages, supply shortages and all of the stimulus funding that the province, provincial and federal government is putting out is really putting a strain on all construction and industry. So, but fortunately, we did receive one from a reputable builder who does build these types of facilities locally and across the country, which is Radius Contracting. The RFP was reviewed by township staff and Colliers, which is the consultant on the file. And it, it was compliant with all the requirements. So they are capable of completing the design build. Again, what it boils down to is timing. So we have reached out to the federal government. Colliers has wrote us a letter as a consultant in the industry to put some statistics behind what they're seeing out there in the procurement world. And we're putting in a request for an extension. So I will keep council apprised of, you know, what the results are of that extension. Based on preliminary discussions, it looks favorable. They, all branches of the government are aware of the shortages. That said, obviously, they're in control of the decision. So whatever it is, I'll report back. But I'm aware of multiple extensions that have been granted. So I'm, of course, cautiously optimistic, but I will keep you guys aware of what's going on. So the RFP was, was within budget, within the grant amount, as you can see here. Federal, the Fed Dev Ontario is giving $483,170, township of Asphodel Norwood, about $161,000 for a total project cost of approximately $644,000. Radius Contracting net HST rebate would come in about $608,000, which left us, actually, we have some contingency built into the RFP, but actually left us with a little bit more contingency. This does include furniture and some landscaping as well. So for parents and guardians to sit to watch and to ensure that there's pathways and walkways to connect the different features of the site, because it will be a couple of different features. It will be a street scape, of course, a concrete street scape that will include a bowl. So the youth will be very, very happy with that. And then, of course, a pump track, which is used more so for scooters and BMX bikes. The design, and we have went out with a couple of preliminary designs to get some preliminary feedback from the youth and adults actually within the community that utilize a facility and travel outside of the area to utilize them. Great feedback that has been supplied to Radius Contracting. And with council's blessing today, we'll be able to move on to the next step. And then the final draft design, we'll do one more round of public consultation so that people can, you know, witness all of their feedback coming to fruition. We'll do our best to incorporate it all. There's some differing of opinions on certain things. So obviously, one direction will have to be taken. But there was, there was some things that were pretty consistent across the board that will be able to satisfy from the public. So the request today is for council to approve the procurement process and enter into a contract with Radius Contracting. I'll take any questions.
Counsel, questions? Deputy Mayor Bert, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor. I realized that the project will be delayed. We were certainly hoping it'd be up and running this summer. But we, we realize all the situation that's going on. What do you know, or has the contractor stated from the time they start to the time they finish, what's the length of time that that project will be completed approximately? And I realized there may be some, you know, finishing up landscaping, that sort of thing.
Right. So they said 12 weeks for the, the bulk.
Okay.
I suspect the landscaping, furniture placement, that sort of thing will fall outside of that. And then, of course, the designer will fall outside of that as well.
No, I just, yeah, I just wanted to know that.
About the shovel.
On the ground to some which.
12 weeks, it would be getting sewn, sewn up. So again, it all depends on when they're able to get on site and the time of year that they're able to get here and get started to be able to get that concrete poured within spec. So it's a lot of concrete.
Any other questions? Counselor War, please.
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. I was just wondering, looking at the contingency of $36,227, do you feel that that is enough with escalating building costs? Like, I guess maybe some things could be deferred if it did go above that, like say benches or something like that.
Right. So that's a good question. I do think it's going to be enough because it is procured. So they are held to the price as soon as we enter into the contract. So if their costs go up on their end, it has no impact on the township. So we're fortunate that the contract come in. I suspected that it would come above like the fitness center because of the cost of building, but the majority of the cost is concrete. So the majority of the cost is concrete. There is some fixtures such as the off bench, as we stated here or there, but the cost of those items isn't enough to, to throw the complete contract out of whack. And we did also have a bit of contingency built into the RFP so that 36,000 is above that contingency as well. So I think we're going to be, I think we're going to be okay. Less concrete. But again, we've had a sign contract. If they'll have to eat those extras.
Any more questions, counsel? I just have a comment. I guess I just want to thank both council and staff, especially staff for finding this grant money that was not so well advertised from the government. Actually went digging for it and you found it. And good job on that one. Because as it states in the, in the agenda here, that we have over 300 signatures from the youth of, of around the area here that really wanted this all wheels park. And it's going to happen. So good job, staff. Thank you very much. All right. So the motion then is that we for the all wheels park, that we receive this for information. And then that we further that we authorize the agreement with Radius Contracting for design building services with an upset limit of 597,000 excluding HST. Counselor Walsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bert. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, R4 then, Candace, please. This is regarding our 2022 first quarter financial variance.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's that time of year again. Hard to believe, we're almost actually wrapping up the second quarter of business for 2022. Believe it or not, the year is flying by. That said, in front of you is a 2021 first quarter financial variance. So basically, it gives council a snapshot of how the township is progressing from a financial standpoint throughout the fiscal year. There's a breakdown by department. You can see there is a slight variance. Most departments, you would expect to see one quarter would be 25% of the year. That said, and it's spelled out in the report, there is some expenditures that are front-ended. So it does get caught up in the second quarter. So such as all of the insurance payments, all of the memberships, all of that stuff is front-ended. It happens in the first quarter of the year. Also, we have had some structured fires. So you will see that the fire department has been quite busy and all of the foam purchases, et cetera, are at budget. So depending on, obviously, there's no way to predict how many structure fires we're going to have for a year or how much activity we're going to have. But I do suspect that the overages in some of the GLs in the fire department will sustain throughout the remainder of the year. So it'll be up to the fire chief and I to mitigate those overages and other GLs and other expenditures to offset it as the year carries forward. The other thing is in the transportation department, traditionally, we have not filled the sand and salt dome until the fall. The decision was made, what kind of for us, by mother nature, actually, just how long the winter season progressed. So we filled that facility at the end of the winter season, which again affects the first quarter versus traditionally, we wouldn't see that expense until the third quarter. So that is why you see that one slightly above. The other ones, building department, as, as we all know, the building department is funded from its own, its own user charges. So it is net zero on the tax base. So that is why it's sitting there at 0%. Of course, parks department not seeing a whole lot going on in the first quarter because it's winter and they're closed. So that's why you see that. So first quarter, unfortunately, doesn't always give a really good picture. It's kind of always skewed, just the way that it, the way that it works out annually. It is the case, if you look back at previous first quarters, is this pretty consistent picture that we see in the first quarter of each year. Of course, the capital construction season hasn't even started in the first year, our first quarter of the year. So capital construction, the capital budget, this is basically reflective of operating as capital projects were procuring them during the first quarter. We're obviously not seeing any invoices or actually any construction happening for the most part. So any capital construction. So any capital construction GLs will be obviously understated and will get caught up in the second and third quarter and then really hit home in quarter four when the final construction season ramp up happens in November to try to beat mother nature at the other end of the year. So I will take any questions, as council has a complete breakdown of every GL from the township in your possession. So if there's anything specific that you'd like to discuss, feel free to ask.
Council, any questions? See no hands then, that will receive this R four report, or the financial variance for information, please. Sir Ward, seconded by Councilor Walsh. Another discussion on the motion. Now, all in favor? There, thank you. Okay, R five then, Candace, would be the management action list, please.
Thank you, mayor. So as council knows, at each council meeting, we take a look at the action list to see what council reports are coming forward. One thing that I do need to add, you'll see on June fourteenth, we have the zoning bylaw amendment for the Bailey's, I believe that's coming forward on May twenty-fourth, the notice has has went out. Just to remind council, as there has been, the circulation has went out for the hundred and twenty meters around that property. So the conversation has chatted and residents are reaching out for clarification. So you may be contacted by a resident, and just a reminder that this is not for the Bailey Farm Field itself, it's just to clean up that property line between the Dorities and the Bailey's farm. So it's just to kind of clean that final step of that process up. As well, hopefully, we'll have a Westwood well update for you. Sidewalk tender was released, so we should have the results, it was released yesterday. Preliminary development agreement for the five lands, again, that file is quiet, I think it's gonna pop down to the bottom. We got to renew our agreement with the integrity commissioner and pound keeper services agreement. So we have been able to reach a tentative, obviously, agreement until it comes to council, but between staff and the Culver Humane Society, we've been able to to reach an agreement. So we had to wait for them to establish agreements from some of the municipalities in their own immediate area, in their own county, they have now got all of those in place. So they're in a better position to reach out and and work with us. So we do have a draft agreement, we are working with them. The cost will be more than what we traditionally seen, as it will be a retainer. But that said, it's a more secure approach to providing that service. And as we know, it's not something that the township can take on internally and build a pound. So we are relying on an external service. I don't believe we need to go back down the road of what happened with the Peterborough Humane Society unless council council wishes to do so. But I'm just happy we've been finally able to secure another option. Agreement with primary healthcare services, so again, that is space at the medical center, that that organization has space for a mental health provider, as well as it did provide for a dietitian at one time, that space. So we are negotiating and talking about that agreement and wondering if we are going to enter into an agreement with that, just based on some other things that are happening, maybe it's time, it may be a shorter term type agreement at this point in time, as council is aware. The mayor and I have been actively pursuing a nurse practitioner for the township, and we have made it through two more steps of that process. And we are now just waiting for the final decisions, decision of the Ontario Health Team. Peterborough Family Health Team submitted its final response for information yesterday. So it's now in their hands, and I will obviously report back to council as soon as we get the word. Be very, very exciting for our community. That said, it obviously brings the discussion with the primary healthcare services is ran by Peterborough Family Health Team. So it's the same organization, so we are discussing how we're going to approach that if a nurse practitioner was to come on board, because obviously, space at the current medical center is coveted. So we'll just have to take a look at that. And I guess that's it, unless there's any questions.
Good report. Any questions from council on any of this, in all? Questions, alright, and the recommendation then is that we accept this report. Mayor Burt, seconded by Councilor Archer. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? And that's. On the agenda, there's no correspondence for action. Council lays all reports, does anyone have anything verbal that they'd like to speak with them? Mayor Burt, please.
Yeah, thank you, three mayor. In addition to the report and agenda, we did have a library board meeting last night. And just to update you, we will be, the library will be participating in New York, so as well with the Lions Club on the long weekend event. They are also taking part, it's nice to see the partnerships with Trail Day with the Backpacks, which is June fourth, and also taking part with the Cultural Heritage Committee with the June fourth and fifth weekend. I'm not sure what they're doing, I I think providing some some materials for for that there. So it's nice to see the different groups partnering up and and working together, I think that's very important. And also, we had a quick review of looking towards having the library branches go buy free, it's been that way throughout COVID, and that will be extended throughout the summer, and then looking at making that possibly permanent, kind of all many libraries are doing that, and just something to to keep in the back of your mind, it's not, it's a, it's not a huge moneymaker in the library, but certainly something that can be made up through donations and fundraisers, so just keeping you abreast of the library, thank you.
Thank you for that, anyone else have anything?
Well, three mayor, just a couple of things. I did send a report in, just before we do the report, asked the cemetery board then on April twenty-six. Basically, two items on my agenda, we, obviously, based on increased cost of grass cutting, re digging, care maintenance trust funds, engraving, and all those, we've got a new price list, it's in fact, we're going to be seven. Sure. We had been approached by the Mayor of the Celtic Lodge about putting some type of tombstone marker in the cemetery. Basically, because that organization's had a ten year, it's longer operates along the So that was approved. And the other thing, just to quickly report on Special Projects Committee, we met on May the second, that Mayor Burt was with me. Some exciting things after we went through, we've been up looking at the corner at Highway seven forty-five, trying to make that corner more attractive. Also, we've done a couple, three great ideas that committees come up with, and now we've just gotta cost them out. Any term in how much we could do this year, but it certainly will try the whole concept here, just try to refresh that corner for people as they're coming in and stopping at those traffic lights. Or passing through. The committee also bought ten sugar maple trees to be placed around the township. And the last item that the team is working on is showcase Hospital Norwood, which has been hiatus for a couple of years to to COVID. We'll be back in this, planning on June eleventh. Major sponsor is Royal Bank of Canada, and we get some pretty good pricing for people to enjoy the day and cruise and the team over and get it.
Thank you, anyone else on council, anything on the report today? Alright, see no hands, and thank you very much for that. Next on the agenda is the CEO clerk treasures list, Candace, the floor is yours again, please.
Thank you, mayor, so just want to circle back. At the last council meeting, I did talk about the fitness center expansion and delays we were seeing due to supply of the web steel choices. We have been able to secure them. I just, mayor and I entered into the contract with the end date of December thirty-first of this year. So that is great news, so we were able to back that up about four to five months. So we are gonna see things starting to happen around here quite quickly. We are finalizing the design. Obviously, we went out to public comment on the fitness center. And there's not really a whole lot more we can do with the space, as we know, the footprint is is defined. We can't really go inside or out of it, and then, of course, we have the accessibility of all the washrooms and shower spaces and all of the regulations around that, which makes that space quite extensive, it's quite large. That said, we are reconfiguring the entrance space. The original design had three sets of doors. We've decided we don't require three sets of doors to get into the facility as long as the arena is still separated. So basically, you'll come into the vestibule, the way that the current draft design is. You'll come in and the vestibule will just be bigger. So as of right now, you come into the vestibule and you either turn right to go into the Millennium Room through those doors, which can be locked and secured separately, or you continue on to the next set of doors, which can also be locked and secured separately into the arena space. So in that vestibule will now be a third door to the left, which includes that will be the entrance into the fitness club and the fitness center. Instead of having, and it would be, the original design was almost like two vestibules back to back, where you opened a set of doors, went into a vestibule that you entered into the fitness center, and then you went through the doors that are there now into where that you enter into the Millennium Room and into the arena. So just about like a lot of, a lot of doors. So we were able to remove a set, obviously, that that helps with the cost. I have asked that if that's the case, that we take the cost of those doors and put that into the flooring, because it would be nice to have a uniform floor in that vestibule, so the current vestibule flooring will be removed, and a new grate put in there, the one that's in there to remove muck and mud off the bottom of boots, and a consistent flooring will be put in there new for the entire space. So that's good, we're also reconfiguring boot and coat room. Obviously, there is concern, obviously, the fitness club is open twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So the wintertime use, so those of us who have went into commercial fitness gyms the wintertime, if you don't have that space done appropriately, that mud and muck and winter boots, et cetera, tends to make its way further into the facility that most people would like it, like it to be. So we have reconfigured that space in hopes that we can kind of contain that before you get rid of your coat and your boots in an area before you enter out into the main fitness space, where you would like to keep that, obviously, mud and snow free. So those conversations are happening, we're hoping to, the design team to meet next week to kind of get that finalized so that all of the structural stuff can be ordered. So things are moving along nicely there. Welcome night scheduled for June twentieth. The invitations will be going out to all of the new residents. Hopefully, by the end of this week, maybe early next week. So then all the new residents, and again, welcoming them to the Millennium Room, very similar to what we've done prior to the pandemic for the new residents. We will be reaching out to the organizations and not going to have as many presentations as we did the first round. But it will be an opportunity for those new residents to meet one another, because obviously, they've moved into the township, most of them during the pandemic, so there hasn't been the opportunity for any socialization or mingling much and meeting each other. So it's going to be a good evening, hopefully, you can join us. And I, one other quick thing, the avian flu. So I did send out an email to all of council in, from Peterborough Public Health in regards to the avian flu and what Peterborough Public Health is doing to try to mitigate that. And it is obviously an education exercise at this point. So council's gonna see a fair bit of that going out, and we are reaching out to some, to residents in the township, specifically to ensure that they are educated on what is happening with the avian flu, anything that they may be able to do to assist with the prevention of that. As we know, we have, our township has some large chicken farms in it, so it is obviously a concern from those farming families. Any, and I'll take any questions on any of that from council, if you have any.
Mayor Burt, please.
Well, yeah, just going back to the avian flu, certainly, I know the local females and local vets, if you're on the mailing list, they're constantly sending out information for for as well as, I believe, the farm fresh and different local food organizations, and quite often, people are getting that information sent out. So so hopefully, there's enough information going out there to to people. But yeah, it certainly is a concern, I think Alberta has it the worst of anybody right now, I heard it's double out there, but it's certainly a concern in Ontario too. So I did hear, while in the car today, that as the weather warms, apparently, this virus does not like heat and warm weather, so they're hoping as the temperatures warm up that the disease in the Western population will decrease. So that's the first I've heard of that, but I did hear that on the radio this morning. So maybe this twenty-five degree plus weather this week will will help mitigate somewhat. I don't know, I just heard that, I did research it, so just passing that along.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Questions? See no hands, the next on the agenda then is general business, does any council member have anything on the general business that's just? Councilor Ward, please.
Thank you, three mayor, I just wanted to ask our CIO if she had any updates on when signage would be put on the central line. I've, I've been driving that periodically, and I've noticed that there's a lot of farm vehicles out on that road this time of year, and there's no, like, share of the road with agricultural vehicles. I just wondered if there's a timeline for the rest of the signage to go up on the center line.
I know that the manager of Public Works has submitted the locates, the locate request for them, right now, they're taking about three to four weeks to get them in, so they've been in about two weeks, so end of the month, first week of June, in that, in in about that?
Anyone else have anything under general business? As a couple of comments, I just wanted to send out our congratulations basically to Daryl Dummer, that they were one of the last four for their Heinz craft hockey bill, that they still received some money through that, so congratulations to them, and it's just too bad that they didn't win that. I'm sure all of us did our part to to put a vote in for them, so. And I just want to remind all of anyone that might be watching this, that we did have our official kickoff for our craft hockey bill for twenty-twenty-three, and I'll keep reminding everyone that we're in on this and that we're in it to win it. Every council meeting we do, I'll keep bringing it up, so. The other thing that I want to say is that our notice of motion did not go unnoticed last night at Peterborough Council. They voted eleven votes on opening discussions with staff for Ashford, North, to bring city transit down to Norwood. So that's a good news story, possibly for our residents and our youth of Norwood and surrounding areas, of course, because it's it's just gonna open us up even even farther to to allow us to do chop and and grow and and just just be more green about things too, so. But like I said, it's not, it's not necessarily a council thing now, it's in staff's hands, gonna go out from here. And just hopefully, hopefully, everything works out for us in the long run, and we still get some support, of course, through our Ontario government, so. Okay, there's no closed motion today at all, there's no notice of motion today, and the time is one forty-eight. It's a little early yet to go into our public meeting. I'll take direction from our CIO as to what we should do at this time, although one minute thirty for our public meeting, and there's nothing much else on the agenda.
You can finish the meeting outside, and we're probably meeting at two o'clock.
Okay, then I'll have the court read out our bylaws.
Being a bylaw to adopt the estimates for the sums required during the year two thousand twenty-two for municipal purposes, and to establish rates of taxation to be levied during the year two thousand twenty-two, and to provide for penalty and interest in the township of Aspedale Norwood, be read a first, second, and third time and numbered by law twenty-twenty-two dash twenty.
Motion by Councilor Archer, seconded by Councilor Ward. Any discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of the council of the township of Aspedale Norwood, held May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, be read a first, second, and third time and numbered by law twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-one.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Burt, seconded by Councilor Walsh, all in favor? And that's Carrie, so you see your future meeting schedule ahead of you on the agenda, and then I would ask for a motion then to adjourn our regular council meeting of today at one forty-nine PM, and that our next regular council meeting will be in person, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, at one PM. Or by the call of the chair, motion by Councilor Archer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Burt, all in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, welcome to our public meeting today of Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty two. The time is two P M. Just for the record, that councillor Archer has left our meeting room and vacated the building. So at this time then, I'd like to welcome our guests from the county here. We have Maloney Menon and Ian Mudd and our representative Jim Whelan from North Gortha. That's on the planning department for the county as a representative. So welcome to all. We have council and staff. So at this time then, I would like to read the land acknowledgement. We respectively acknowledge that the township of Aspen, Alnorwood is located on the Treaty Twenty Mississauga Territory and in the traditional territory of the Mississauga and the Chickewa Nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which include Curd Lake, Iowa, Wata, Alderville, Skugog Island, Brahma, Bosale and Georgina Islands First Nations. We respectfully acknowledge that the Williams Treaties First Nations are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. So at this time, I'll ask council if there's any declaration of any pecuniary interest at this time or a time of the subject. All right, see no hands. Thank you. Looking for an approval of the agenda for today's public meeting. Motion by councillor Walsh, seconded by deputy mayor Burke, all in favor. And that's carried. So at this time, the notification is that the official plan amendment was circulated in accordance with the section twenty twenty two slash six point four of the Planning Act R S O nineteen ninety as amended. The notification was also posted on the county of Peterborough website and the township of Aspen, Alnorwood website. So at this time, I will hand the meeting over to Maloney Menon, planner, county of the Peterborough. Please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Maloney Menon. I'm a planner with the county. And as you've noted, councillor Jim Whelan is with us today as the public here on planning matters for the county. The today's public meeting is regarding the subject lands located at forty four Albine Street. One point five acre parcel in the Norwood settlement area and designated residential in the local component of the county official plan. It's also zoned residential in the township zoning by law. It contains an existing dwelling. The purpose of the application today is to amend the official plan in order to allow for the creation of one additional lot by consent. A severance for residential purposes is permitted in the residential designation on existing lots of record as of nineteen eighty three. As the subject property was created by consent in twenty seventeen, it is not considered an existing lot of record and therefore not eligible for consent. Thus, an O P A is being requested to allow an additional severance of the lot. In support of the application, the applicant provided a planning justification report prepared by EcoView Consulting Services. The Planning Act requires that at least one public meeting be held for an official plan amendment. And today's public meeting is to inform the public about this proposal and to solicit public input. It is important for members of public to speak up if anyone has concerns in order to preserve their appeal rights. The county and township coordinated a joint notice of complete application and public meeting circulated on April fifth in accordance with the Planning Act by mail, by newspaper ad, as you've noted, as well as on the county and township websites. Prescribed agencies and ministries were circulated, the application, and no concerns or objections were received. Neither to date have any public comments been received on the application. The county of Peterborough is the approval authority for amendments to the official plan. So once the county receives a recommendation from the township, planning department will proceed to write a technical report on the O P application with a recommendation for county council to consider. Our report will take into account relevant O P policies and provincial policies as well as agency and public comments. And when county council has made a decision, a notice of decision will be provided in accordance with the act. The decision will be final if there are no appeals within the twenty day appeal period. And I would lastly note that if any member of the public wishes to receive a notice of decision, that they make a written request to county. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So at this time, then I'll ask for the meeting record, then that if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this or speak in opposition. Is there anyone here? And state your name and where you're from, sir, please.
So I I guess I don't really have much to add to this, other than just that it's a fairly straightforward official plan amendment. What we're looking to do is just provide a new infill lot within that property on on Albine Street. Makes sense for a place, right, of course. So of course, there are eligibility dates that 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 are required in the O P. So this is the amendment is required to to allow this to happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, I'll open it up to council at this time. Council, any questions of other representatives? Deputy Mayor Burke, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have any questions. The report is very thorough and very straightforward. It certainly meets all the requirements and certainly meets in the anticipation, the infilling that we're we're looking to achieve. Particularly well, in in the settlement area as well. So I really don't have any questions. That's just my comments. So I thank you for a very detailed report going forward.
Any other questions or comments from council at this time? Then I'll ask the clerk, then is there anyone that would not, or would be in opposition? Is there any? So I'll ask the one, two and three times. None? Didn't change your mind? Thank you. All right, then I'll have the clerk read the right to appeal one, please.
Okay, if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the county of Peterborough or township of Aspen, Alnorwood in respect of the proposed official plan amendment, before the approval authorities give or refuse to give approval to the official plan amendment, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the approval authority to the Ontario Land Tribunal. If a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the county of Peterborough or township of Aspen, Alnorwood in respect of the proposed official plan amendment, before the approval authorities make a decision regarding the amendments, the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal, unless in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so.
Thank you. Okay, then council is basically is going to finish out. So our recommendation then today is that we support this file number one fifty P dash two two zero zero and amendment number sixty nine to the official plan for the county of Peterborough submitted. And further that the clerk be authorized to prepare the requisite declarations and forward along with a copy of the minutes of the public meeting to the county of Peterborough. Need a motion by Deputy Mayor Burke, seconded by councillor War. Any other discussion on the motion? See no hands, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Now I'll ask for an adjournment that this public meeting held on May the tenth, two thousand twenty two be adjourned at two oh nine P M. And that the regular, nope, we're done for the day. Council, so I need a motion then to adjourn, please. Councillor War, seconded by councillor Walsh, all in favor. And that's carried. Thank you very much for a good public meeting.